To the February 8, 2021, Tana Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals. I'd like to open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. If you'd all stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the Tana Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals. The procedure for tonight, and every night we say, each applicant will come up, be sworn, explain their application.
I'm not off.
They may answer some questions from the board members. Members of the public, if they want to make any statements, will also be sworn. When the records closed, at the end of the meeting, we will deliberate on each of the, on each of the applications which have been closed. Each applicant can stay till the end of the meeting to find out whether the application has been approved, or they can call the zoning administrator in the morning. So I'd like to take a roll call. First of all, Tony D.
I'm here.
Ms. Levitt?
Here. I'm here.
Okay. Art Grace? I understand he may be late. Larry Sloman?
Here.
Christine.
Here.
Phyllis Capone?
Here.
And Tony Straka?
Here.
Okay. Because Mr. Grace is not here, Mr. Straka will be a voting member tonight unless and until Mr. Grace appears. Tell you that tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the governor's executive order, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal boards to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with that executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted on the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of the board members. There is a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed. We have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the doors of the town hall as the town's bulletin board is within the building and not presently available to the general public. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmation that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published. That brings us to item number one, Vassar College. I understand there's a request to adjourn that to the March 8 meeting. And so I would move to adjourn it to the March 8 meeting.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, then that's carried. Item number two, Stewart Shop. Again, there's an application to adjourn it to the March 8 meeting. And so I would make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Tony D. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Next on the agenda is item number three, Keith McLaughlin, 20 Kinderhook Drive. Is Mr. McLaughlin available?
No, I... Yeah, yes, I am here.
Okay.
Mr. McLaughlin, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I swear.
All right, why don't you describe your application for us?
So I live at 20 Kinderhook Drive. It's a little less than a third of an acre of land. Residential zoning. We're looking to put an in-ground pool in the backyard. And right now, my understanding is the setback is 15 feet. And we're looking for a variance of approximately 10 feet. That would allow us to put the pool closest to the rear property line. Mostly, we're requesting this because of the layout of the, the structure on the property and to allow for usability of the, of the backyard, so.
All right, and why don't you describe the backyard for us?
Uh, so, the plot is about just over 75 feet wide. The structure of the property, the, the main structure of the house, is about 75 feet from the rear property line at the, at a portion of the house. And then there's a garage that sticks out a little bit further. I don't have that in front of me, but it should be on the application that you guys are looking at. It should also give a distance to the rear property line as well. And basically, again, if you look at that, there's, there's not a lot of, it's, it's a little bit less than a third of acre, the whole entire plot. And the house is fairly centrally located on it. So what we're looking to do, again, is just get the pool a little closer to that back property line so that what land is there, we can, we can utilize in a better fashion.
Okay. And the fences that surround your property, are they on the three sides of the property?
Yes.
Are they your fences or the neighbors' fences?
Um, one fence is definitely mine, one is a neighbor's, and one was existing when I moved in, so.
Which, which ones are, which one is yours?
The one to the left of the property on the, on the, on the north side of the lot.
Okay. All right, I don't have any more questions. Ms. Levitt?
Um, I'm, I'm just looking at your drawing. The, the one thing I just want to clarify is if the lot is 75 feet wide, and you, and you have 32, 32, and 15, that adds up to basically 79. So, I mean, somewhere, there's another four feet. It's, the, I believe that there's only 32, 28 feet between the pool and the south property line, probably.
I'm not looking at the drawing. I could have, I could have inaccurately wrote a number down there. So my, my, my expectation would be to put the pool as close to the northeast section of the lot as possible, without asking for a variance on the north side of the property. So we would, we would adhere to that 15-foot setback on the north side. And then, so that would be 15. And then if we were to, if we were to definitely do a 32-foot pool, that would be the 15 plus the 32. And then whatever's given for the remainder is what it is. I'm not as concerned, I wasn't as concerned about that, so I may have inaccurately wrote down a number there. I, I'd have to look at it. I don't have it. If you want to bear with me for a second, I'll, I will grab that.
I would agree with Ms. Levitt's math.
You would, or you wouldn't?
I would. I know, I agree with it.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I, I guess I miscalculated. So that, that area to the, to the right should be about 28 feet. And I, I don't know, I, I might have been doing this a little fast. Usually, I'm pretty good with numbers. So the area to the right would be approximately 28 feet. Now, the other thing, as I was entertaining, I mean, it's, I haven't purchased the pool. My goal was to get the variance first. And then, then I would go ahead and likely purchase the pool. Because with the permit, with the, with the building permit, I'm, I may try to, I was thinking of possibly going with a 34-foot wide pool, which would, wouldn't, it wouldn't, I wouldn't need a variance for that because to the right of the pool, as long as I, as long as I can get the variance to the rear property line, that's my main concern. If you guys have other concerns, I'm, I'm happy to entertain them and talk to you about them. But like, there should be about 28 feet to the right of the pool. So if I was to go with a little bit of a, a longer or wider pool, I could either have it come in a little bit more into the property or go to the right of the property a little bit further.
Can I ask one more question before I'm done? Um, yeah, looking at this, my question is that you, you say you want to put up a fence and some green conifers.
Yeah.
So in that five feet, you're going to also have the fence and the green barrier.
Yes, so.
Have you considered flipping this pool to go east to west?
I have.
Then you would have more room to, at the property line? Have you, have you considered that?
If I was to go east to west in order to, to, to get a similar utilization of the backyard, I would be asking for a variance on the north side to go five feet, within five feet there. So either way, I would be asking for a variance. I played with the idea of going that way. But it's, to me, it made a better, from a landscaping standpoint, I, I think this layout is a little bit better. Again, if, if I was to go, if I was to turn that pool clockwise, one turn, if, if I was to do that, again, to get, to get the yard space that I would like to have, I would have to probably go about five feet to the north property line.
Any other questions?
There's also, in the backyard, there is a little bit of a slope. So if I was to put the pool that way, it would require a lot more work from a landscaping standpoint to make everything level as well.
Okay, I'm done.
Tony D?
I have no questions.
Larry?
Larry, your mic is not muted, so you should be on.
Okay, you have no questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Okay, anyone from the, oh, I'm sorry, Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay, and Tony S?
Uh, no questions.
Okay. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
You can raise your hand on Zoom, or if you're on a phone, you can do star nine to raise your hand, or star six to unmute. Not seeing any hands raised.
Then I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on this application. Is there a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Next is item number four. This is.
Thank you.
990 Duchess Turnpike. Is there someone here?
Yes, I am.
Why don't you state your name?
I don't think you heard it.
So my name is, I will, like, swear. Ready?
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Mr. Freeman?
I do.
Okay. Okay, why don't you tell us what the project is?
So, my name's David Freeman. I work for the owner, Debbie Mueller Lee. The proposal is to construct a six-foot wide deck on the side of the house. Debbie purchased the house and is redoing it to make more, more accessible for her daughter, who has MS, so she can move in. The way the house functions, really, the, even in redoing the front porch, which we're going to be doing, there's really no accessible route to that from inside the house. So we propose to create a six-foot wide deck with access off the back down to the driveway. It also gives her a place to sit on the side of the house as the disease progresses, and the potential, at some point, unfortunately, for probably a ramp off the back. So we're looking for a variance of 6 feet 4 inches. It still leaves 13 feet 8 to the side yard.
Actually, I understand that there's an amendment to the application. Are you, are you aware of that?
No, I'm not.
I'm told that, based upon a survey of the property, the edge of the deck is actually only 18 feet from the sideline, from the side yard.
Okay.
So it would only require a two-foot variance.
Okay, even better.
Well, I, I need to make sure that's accurate. Do you have any information?
No, the, the information on my drawing is that I provided, which is based on field dimensions. I feel is accurate, but that's the best I can do, so.
Hey, Paul, can I speak? It's Chrissy.
Of course.
So when we received the building permit that I originally denied, the side yard said that there was 19 feet 8 inches. So that's what I based my denial off of. And then when the application was received for the variance, it was based on an old survey. It wasn't an actual survey, it was just setback information for when the house was built. But because it, it's not an actual survey, and it, it's just an estimate, I kind of, I asked him to go for the, the larger variance because there is no survey, and if the survey is done in the future, you know, it might, it might turn out to be, you know, that he doesn't have that much space.
Okay. Yeah, what, what the owner provided was a plot plan, which, of course, is that, is not a survey, but.
Yeah.
She seemed to think that, that it was, so, okay.
Yep.
The applicant also indicated where she thought the lot line was, and we did some measurements there. But I don't think that, depending on where actually the, the lot line is, they're not going to come past the driveway anyway, are you?
No, we're not.
So I don't think any, anything that we approve.
Okay.
Even if we approve.
Yes.
More than they, they actually need, I don't think they're going to use it to go past the roadway.
Okay.
All right. I don't have any more questions. Ms. Levitt?
No, nothing.
Tony D?
Tony Dean has no questions.
Uh, Larry?
No questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Phyllis?
Um, no questions.
Okay, and Tony S?
Uh, no additional questions. Just, just as a matter of note, that I, I did speak with the owner when I was there on Saturday and got her take as to where the measurement was taken from. And she indicated that she believed that the 19 feet 8 inch was taken from the side of the structure that sticks out of the, the side of the house rather than the, than the wall of the house itself. And I think that's what you were referring to, Paul, in terms of amendment on the application.
Yeah, well, actually, I think you saw, she provided a plot plan, which is different than the drawing that Mr. Freeman did.
Yes.
Right, okay. Uh, anyone from the public who wants to comment on this application?
You can raise your hand on Zoom or unmute yourself. Star six to unmute yourself if you're on the phone. Not seeing any.
I don't see any response, so therefore, I'll move to close this hearing. Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that carries. That brings us to number five, John Mahoney's 38 Willowbrook Heights. Mr. Mahoney?
Evening.
Mr. Mahoney, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Why don't you describe this application?
Uh, back on March 2, 2018, one of the first nor'easters, when we had three in five days, a tree came in and basically shifted the old structure that was on my property. After a long and hard battle with the insurance company, they provided me a settlement to where we opted to, instead of trying to repair a house that was unreparable, was to go and put a modular on the site. The original house was a 46 by 46 foundation with a 10-foot deck off onto the north end of the house. When I did the measurements for the house, I did away with the deck and extended the, the foundation by 10 feet to make the house 56 by 27 and a half. So I moved the house back off the, the street for the setback there and then put it in the footprint of the previous foundation. Afterwards, when I went to the, the building department for the, my certificate of occupancy, it, a note was put in that they wanted a new survey when the new house was on the property. So I provided that, and that's when we came up with the, the 20 feet we didn't have on the, the side between my property line and the town of Poughkeepsie property line at the cul-de-sac. So I'm looking for a variance on the, the distance from my property to the town's property.
And would you describe the neighborhood?
Uh, it's a residential area. It's a rather narrow dead-end road on the last house on the road. Past my house is the cul-de-sac. When I first moved in, it was nothing but woods. And I guess it's got to be at least like 12, 14 years ago, they put the cul-de-sac in. There's like 20, I guess 20-some odd houses on the street. My house now, that with the setback off the street, is the actually only one on the creek side of the street that actually has a front yard because of the way that, the properties are.
Do you know the size of your lot?
It is 100 by, trying to, trying to remember where the other one was. I know it's on the, the paperwork I submitted, I think it might be. I don't recall what it is going from the street back to the, to the creek.
It varies from 251 on, on the south side, it looks like, to 216 on the north side.
And where the garage is, how much of that, I mean, do you have a driveway there? Is that just five feet of it is your driveway, and the rest is the cul-de-sac?
That would be correct. And actually, that's not going to be utilized as a driveway. That's just, actually, the way it was even given to the, the building department, is that's just an oversized entry door.
Okay, and so where's parking otherwise?
Uh, the parking for most of the place is going to be actually on the, the main street.
Okay.
Between the, the, my house and 36 Willowbrook.
And the other structures around the cul-de-sac and the, the boat and stuff, do you know who owns those things?
Uh, that's people who live on the street, actually.
Okay, all right. Ms. Levitt, you have any questions?
No. No questions.
Tony D?
Oh, I don't know that Tony heard you.
Tony D?
Tony D?
Yeah.
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony S?
Uh, no questions.
Okay. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
You can raise your hand if you're on Zoom, or just unmute yourself. Uh, if you're on the phone, star six to unmute yourself. I am not seeing any.
All right. I don't see any, any participants, so I'll move to close this application. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, then that carries. That brings us to number six. Dana Heffler, 53 South Jackson Drive. Is there someone here from that application?
Yes, I'm here.
All right.
Hi, do you swear or, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you describe your application?
Um, it's for an in-ground pool and a fence along the, I guess it's the west side of my property, and partial in the front.
All right, and you, your property is bounded by two streets, is that correct?
Yes.
And in a normal orientation, where would the pool be?
Um, I had a pool years ago, and it was like, if you're looking at my house, it was to the right side of it, but behind it. So it was closer to like Jackson Drive side.
Okay. And that part of your yard is, is fenced, correct?
It is fenced.
Okay. And do you know about how far, well, the pool's going to be behind the fence, correct?
Yes.
Then those are all the questions I have. Ms. Levitt?
No questions.
Tony D?
He's not sitting there.
Okay, we'll come back to him then. Larry?
I'm sorry.
Larry?
No questions.
Tony D? Do you have any questions?
Questions.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Christine?
No questions.
Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Tony S?
Uh, no questions.
All right. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
You can raise your hand on Zoom, or just unmute yourself. Star six to unmute on the phone. And not seeing it.
I don't see any response, so I'll move to close this public hearing. Is there? Okay. Any, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? Then that carries. That brings us to item number seven. New Hamburg Marina Small Cell Verizon Wireless, 15 Point Street. Is there someone here for that application?
Wait, isn't number seven Kingwood Drive?
Yeah, I think the agenda was updated, I think.
Okay, then, number seven, Craig Shannon's 47 Kingwood Drive. Is there someone here for that application?
Uh, I'm here, if you could hear me. John McKee?
Yes.
John, do you swear or affirm that the, that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you describe that application?
Uh, so we're, um, working on the house right now. The owner wants to put a deck off the back of the house with a, um, storage facility underneath it. It comes out approximately 10 feet off the back of the house, or back of the garage, I'm sorry, and extends the full length of the back of the garage. So it's approximately 10 by 24 feet. We're going to do the deck and the storage area on an existing building. It's on the north side of the garage, or it's the back of the garage. That's it.
Does the, does this addition, does this structure come out any farther than the existing garage and what's above it?
Yeah, it does. It's, um, it's, it sticks out another, I believe it's.
I'm, I'm sorry, to the side yard?
No, it doesn't. No, not the side. It stays within the, the setback of the garage itself. You know, there's 12 feet on the side there.
Okay. And can you describe the topography of the area behind the garage where you want to put this addition?
Uh, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a hill, not too bad. But as you get out like 20 feet from the garage, it's a pretty big hill there. It goes down. So, you know, adding on to the existing garage is, you know, there's really nowhere for a storage area. So, you know, this is the only place the guy has in his backyard without making something, you know, 50 yards away from the back door for any kind of storage or, and the deck, you know, he wants to have the deck attached to the structure that we just added to the garage, second floor to the garage.
Can you tell me the level of the deck compared to the ground of the neighbor's yard?
The neighbor's ground, uh, it's approximately, um, I would say 10 feet off the ground.
From the neighbor, on the neighbor's level?
Well, from the neighbor's front yard to the level of the garage is about 10 feet, I'd say. I'm, I mean, I never measured that because, you know, I don't know what elevation exactly his yard is at, but it's about 10 feet, maybe 12.
Okay.
There are pine trees in the way, so it's not like if this deck is put you put up, you can see down into their house. It's you know, there's you know, pine trees, a pretty heavy row of them.
Okay, and do you know whose property those that vegetation is on?
I'm sorry?
Do you know whose property the veget- those trees are on?
Those, I believe, are right on the property line. They're probably half his and half the neighbor's.
Okay. And just behind the garage, in between the garage, well, just past where the addition's gonna be, there's there's a patio or some structure there?
Yeah, that's a it's it's a patio. So it's elevated on one side, but it's it's a patio behind the garage. It's made out of stone. And then behind the house, it goes into a framed deck. So it's a mix of both.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, before you go on, I just want to note that we have Mr. Freeman, who's also on the line, and he's actually the person who that we have the agent consent form from. And my copy doesn't actually have an owner's affidavit, an owner consent, but I assume that that would also indicate Mr. Freeman as the responsible person. So David, I just want to make sure you concur with everything that John just said. And if there's anything you want to add before the board goes around for questions?
No, John did a very good job. He was all correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Lisa, should Mr. Freeman be sworn in too? Would that be?
Mr. Sure, I mean, we can. He was sworn in on a prior but not on this hour yet.
Okay. All right, Ms. Levitt, any questions?
No questions.
Tony D?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Phyllis? Phyllis, you're muted.
So the one change is that you're expanding the deck that comes out like on top of the shed piece, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. But all the rest of it is gonna be like flush, so to speak. And it'll just kind of fit in under that space.
Yes.
Okay, no further questions.
And Tony S?
No further questions.
Okay, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
I'm not seeing any raised hands or hearing anyone.
All right, I don't see anyone who wishes to participate, and so I'll move to close this public hearing. Is there a second? Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then that carries. Now this brings us to item number eight. The Verizon Wireless of the East, fifteen Point Street at New Hamburg Marina Small Cell Verizon. Is there someone here for that one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we actually have three people here tonight. My name is Scott Olson. And we have Verizon Wireless's RF engineer, Mike Crosby. And we have Brian Sarci from Aerosmith Development.
Mr. Olson, Mr. Crosby, and Mr. Sarci, do you each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Okay, before we begin, Lisa? Do you want to proceed with the public hearing, or do you want to adjourn it for us to get our own expert, or what do you suggest?
I have no objection if the board wants to open the public hearing and take testimony, but I would adjourn it to the next meeting so that the RF frequency expert can weigh in.
Okay. So to the applicants, do you wish to offer your application now, or do you want to wait until our expert has an opportunity to review your application?
I think we're all here. We might as well provide a brief presentation if that's okay with the board.
It's fine with me. Is that good with everyone else? Okay, any objections from anyone else on the board?
No.
Okay, I don't hear any objections, so go ahead.
Okay, first, have you identified an RF consultant, if I may ask?
I believe we have one in mind, if I can find.
Yeah, we Lisa had given us a name of someone that she's worked with in another community who we are going to talk about this evening.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And Lisa, I know we spoke a while ago. I don't I don't recall if we talked about that. If if we did, I forgot and I apologize. Anyway, so what we're looking to do with this application is it's pretty simple. It's we're just installing what they call a small wireless facility. It includes one small antenna that we want to locate on the roof of the existing White's Marina off of fifteen point fifteen Point Road or Street. And it it's also gonna, there's a small amount of equipment that's ground mounted. The equipment is attached to the antenna by by some cables that run up along the building. And and I actually have some materials I can share with the board through this Zoom if you would want to see them. If not, that's fine too. It's up to the board.
Sure.
Okay, let me I've gotten better with this over time. Let's see if I can still do it. There we go.
We don't judge on people's technical abilities here.
Well, I should be better than I am, but all right, so let's just, so that that was just a description. Anyway, why we're doing this and Mike can always, you know, chime in if he needs to, but we have significant capacity and coverage issues in this area of the town. There's a huge network usage and it just drains our facilities, the nearby facilities, so that they don't operate the way they're supposed to operate. So Mike has determined that with a small facility like this and I can show you some some graphs a few slides down. It will do wonders for our network. It's going to increase capacity and coverage and provide the service that we should be providing. So and and just, I I don't know if this town is concerned. Some towns are concerned with 5G versus 4G, so I want to make it very clear, this is for 4G only right now, this application. This application doesn't have anything to do with with 5G. This is just a quick little aerial showing you the marina. And my cursor is on the southmost part of the building. That's basically where we're gonna put, we'd like to put the antenna. This is the elevation that shows it better. It's gonna be pipe mounted to the side of the building and rise about five, six feet or so above the the highest part of the building. This little area that my cursor's going over, we're gonna paint the cables to match the side of the building, so they're not noticeable. And they'll come down and connect into this you know, small little equipment area, which is basically sixty-six square feet, so it's 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 pretty small. Overall, the footprint's tiny and it's pretty, you know, it's not too intrusive at all. This is just an overlay of our of the tax zoning, I'm sorry, the zoning district. And it shows you why we need to be before your board. If you look at the red or maroon areas, you know, which includes the residential New Hamburg District, the R dash four A. Those areas do not permit public utility facilities. The R twenty, on the other hand, which is, well, it's not red, I'll just say that, I don't know what it is. But that's a zoning district that does permit these facilities. The problem is, these are all residential houses and that's not commercial in nature. We looked at some of these properties. It just doesn't make sense to put the facility on a residential property like these. We feel like the marina is a perfect location. We spoke to different people within the town also, some of the planners. I think they believe it's a great location but for the need for the variance. So this just gives you the illustration as to why we need a use variance. And speaking of use variances, I don't know if this board is familiar. You know, a traditional use variance is very difficult to get in New York. But there's a special public utility use variance standard that applies to these types of facilities. That was determined back in nineteen ninety-three under a case Rosenberg, the Court of Appeals, the highest court. It basically applied the longstanding public utility variance standard to cell tower cases and facilities such as this. It's basically a very simple three-part test. We need to demonstrate that we have a gap in service or inadequate coverage. We need to demonstrate that the proposed location will resolve those issues. And to protect the neighboring community, we've got to demonstrate that the facility represents a minimal intrusion to the community. In other words, the visual impacts are minor in nature. We believe that this facility, as proposed, meets all three prongs of the test. This is just a quick view shed map that shows you in this I I I look, looks like yellow on my screen, but this is the area of visibility, which may mostly comprises the marina. It's where you're gonna, you'll see the antenna from. There might be some area in the red where it's partially visible, but there's some screening. But overall, it's extremely limited visibility. And, you know, we took a couple of pictures to demonstrate this. This is looking down Point Street towards the Marina Building. That blue building obviously is the marina. And the antenna is going to go right there. The next slide I show you will show you what the antenna looks like, which is right there. As you can see, it kind of fits in fairly well with all the telephone poles. You have light poles. It's not just sticking out as a sore thumb in any way, shape, or form. Just another view. Here's again, this is the location where the antenna is proposed. That's the antenna in that little orange circle. I circled it because it doesn't stand out that well, so I want to make sure that everybody on the board can see it, so. You know, fits in fairly well with the surrounding and existing use right now. You know, I don't know if Mike wants to talk about this. I pulled some slides out from the radio frequency justification to try to just give you a flavor as to why we need to be here. This is some technical graphs that show you what our existing coverage is and some other graphs that will show you what it will be with the new site. So Mike, I don't know, do you want to just briefly hit the seven hundred and twenty-one hundred megahertz slides?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure because I thought I hit the mute button, but it's covered up on my screen with this presentation showing up, so just to give a little bit of context to these slides. This site, New Hamburg Marina, is the second site in a two-site solution to resolve the coverage and capacity issues at the southern tip of the town of Poughkeepsie. Some of you may be familiar with or remember the application we had a year or two ago for the New Hamburg Fire Department. That was the first of these two sites. So this site was designed in parallel at the same time as the New Hamburg Fire Department. But unfortunately, we didn't have the budget available to do both at the same time. The budget is in place and, you know, as we're before you moving forward with this. You know, these small cells, the New Hamburg Fire Department used what we call panel antennas. This particular install- and it used a telephone pole style installation. This uses an existing structure, so we're able to just mount the antenna on a pipe to the existing building. The antenna Scott mentioned is what's called a cantenna, which is a stealth type of antenna where the antenna elements are actually inside this stealth enclosure, so it actually just looks like a transformer or some other type of standard utility apparatus that would exist in the area. The challenge that we have with using these small, very small sites is they have to be very precisely located. And I'm sure your radio frequency specialist will, you know, look through this document and will have back and forths to answer questions about all those specifics, and I don't want to obviously get into all that now. But just so that you, I wanted to make sure that, you know, everybody knew that this was the second site in a two-site solution. It does impact you know, sites that are surrounding this area that are inside and outside of the town of Poughkeepsie, but these sites all work together. We do have multiple license boundaries, so the site is strategically located on the riverfront so that we're able to use the licenses that are on the east side of the Hudson River by transmitting those sectors back inland. And also, we have the ability to transmit the frequencies that we have that are on both sides of the river across the river to the west and also on the east side of the river. So there are some engineering challenges there that the site is designed around that I think that those things, if necessary, we can discuss those in more detail in the future, but you know, with the terrain that exists, the river, the license boundaries, and the ability to utilize existing structure, I think we put together a nice little site that's able to resolve the issues and have a minimal impact, if any, on the local community. I know that we've heard from many customers in this area, especially some, you know, many at the yacht club and at the marina. And we know that the services is desperately needed in this area based on the feedback that we're getting, so we're looking forward to being able to resolve that. If you want to flip through, Scott, you'll get to see a little bit of a before and after. So that's our existing coverage we have there now for the low band. And so when Scott goes to the proposed coverage, you'll see the orange areas, which are the weak coverage versus the green areas, which are the strong coverage. We'll resolve those orange coverage. You can see that green being out up by the edge of the river allows this site to do much more than what a small cell normally would be able to because the free space path loss that we have across waterfront is much less than it than over areas of terrain or foliage. So this location helps us to get the most impact for the community and helps offload the neighboring sites so that it actually has a positive impact by improving performance for the neighboring sites as well. So it's not just improving coverage and capacity in the footprint of the proposed site, but because of the offload nature that this site provides, it actually helps to elevate or to improve the performance of the neighboring sites as well.
Yeah, and this is just the low band, that's seven hundred megahertz, which is, you know, it's one of four, I think, different frequencies that Verizon uses. This is this, you know, second of four.
Right, this is the mid-band. So this is the, these are the bands that the licenses are different on on each side of the river. You actually have three different licensed areas here. So when you look at the before coverage, you know, this this mid-band coverage around two gigahertz is twenty-one hundred megahertz coverage is much more subject to signal degradation due to the terrain in the area. And you can see that the New Hamburg Fire Department site nearby that's just northeast of the project location that has, you know, the footprint is exactly where we want it to be, which is to cover the residential areas there. But when you go to the proposed coverage, you'll see down by the water where this site is located, lower in terrain, we're able to cover the MTA line, the MTA parking lot, the marinas, the the village area, so, you know, this, and and we're able to keep that signal from transmitting across the river to the west side for the most part. So, which is what the goal is for us to be able to do. So we're able to improve coverage where it's needed, prevent it from overshooting into areas where it's unwanted on this, on these frequencies, the AWS and PCS frequencies. And on those previous slides, we're able to see that those bands that we have licenses for on both sides of the river, the site's able to provide that service too.
Yeah, I think that was all we had in terms of those are the only slides that I pulled out. There's more information in the analysis, but I know, I want to keep it kind of brief, so. The only thing that I would add, and this kind of summarizes it, that we had SiteSafe prepare a an analysis, and it was done by a New York State licensed professional PE professional engineer, and they determined that we will be fully compliant with the existing FCC regulations in terms of admissions. So the ground level signal strength that people will encounter is actually a hundred times less than that, which we could do legally. And that just demonstrates that that we are just operating at, it's a low-power type of technology. But we have that analysis in the record, so obviously, when your radio frequency expert looks at it, you know, that's something he'll he'll look at and and confirm whether he agrees or disagrees, but like I said, it's it's done based on standard standard methodology and math, so, you know, we've never had one of those disputed. But obviously, that's something for your your expert to look at. And the last thing is that these this antenna will not interfere with any other local residential uses, television, radio, et cetera. So I think that was the last of my PowerPoint, and so we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Ms. Levitt?
I'm just, if ever, could, is this gonna be something that would be capable of having 5G on it?
I would let Mike address that. I would let Mike address that because I don't know the answer.
Well, and the other half of my question, so that if he's going to address it, would be, could it have 5G and would that change the height or the configuration of the antenna should you decide? And would you have to come back for a variance for that? That's my only question that I have.
So, as far as 5G is concerned, you know, you've probably seen, you know, articles about Verizon launching 5G millimeter wave technologies, especially throughout the New York City area. This particular site is a 4G-only, so the bands of spectrum that we're using are the AWS, PCS, and the 7850, which we've listed in our document. Those are our traditional 4G technologies and frequencies. You know, this...we don't have any plans for the site to be one of those millimeter wave 5G sites. So, there's no plans in place for that. You know, what the future holds, it's above my pay grade, quite frankly, you know. But I don't expect this site to be a 5G millimeter wave site anytime soon because otherwise I would be able to tell you that as part of this application. So, you know, what other flavors of 5G might be out there, the future holds. But, you know, as we went from 3G to 4G, you know, all those licensed bands of service went from 3G technology to 4G technology. So, as the networks advance, you know, I'm sure we'll continue to have these conversations. But as far as what I think a lot of the news is about, especially in the city, is about the 5G millimeter wave, and this site does not plan to be one of those. And if it was, and if it was converted, you know, I don't know what shape or form it would be converted to 5G. So, I really wouldn't be able to answer the question as to whether something else would be needed. But certainly, if we were adding antennas or, you know, physically changing the site, you know, we certainly would have to go through whatever the proper channels are to do that. It wouldn't just be swapped out, you know, under the cover of darkness or something like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tony D.
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Christine?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony S.
No questions.
All right. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
Again, you can raise your hand if you're on Zoom or just unmute yourself if you're on the phone, star six to unmute. I am not seeing any.
Okay. In that, in that case, I'd like to do two things. I think they might commotion for us to hire an expert to review the radio frequency information. My understanding is that that's a cost that the applicant picks up? Is that correct, Lisa?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, I'll make that motion. Do we need to name someone or...or can we just?
Since we've identified someone, if the board is comfortable, I...and I will let the applicants know, the person I was recommending to the board was Douglas Fishman, who I've worked with before. And if the board is amenable to that, I think it would be cleanest if you were to recommend him, but in the alternative, if for some reason he were unavailable, I would make it also a more broad motion that he would be the preferable choice, but we need an expert in any event, so to allow the board to work with staff and come up with an alternative.
All right. Then I'll make a motion to appoint an expert in the radio frequency, and I would suggest Mr. Fishman, if he's available. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Now, you have to say...
Any discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? All right. That motion carries, and then I'll make a motion to adjourn this to at least to the March 8th. Is that enough time, do you think, Lisa?
So, I've spoken briefly with Mr. Fishman, and he's indicated there is one other hurdle that he will have to, which is in the town, that the experts need to also be approved by the town board. So, we will have that go before the town board in an ideal world on the 17th, and he has indicated preliminarily that he thinks he will be able to get us some response back in time for the March 8th meeting so that whether it's questions or additional information he needs or preliminary analysis, but he believes that he'll have time to get a response to the board prior to the March 8th meeting.
All right. Why don't we adjourn it to March 8th in the hopeful event that we can have that information? I assume that any comments that our expert has, he'll be dealing with the applicants, and that should be resolved at that time. If we need to adjourn it again, we can do that. Is that acceptable to the applicants?
Yes. And I was gonna just offer, if Mr. Fishman has any questions or comments, you know, he's more than welcome to contact Mike Crosby directly to have, you know, an engineer-to-engineer, you know, conversation if that helps facilitate what he's looking to do.
Okay. I think that's a good way to resolve it.
Yeah. We can, and staff can kind of help put that together too, once we have proper authorization from the town board, so.
Great. Thank you.
Then I'll make that a motion to adjourn to the March 8th meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Was there a second? Okay. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 But just take care of yourself.
Any opposed?
I will get to you.
Okay. That cares. I'd ask us for a short break as we come to the end of our agenda, and then we'll come back for deliberations. Those people who wish to remain and determine or find out the application can do so, or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning. So, I'm just gonna take a...I move to adjourn for five minutes. We'll come back 7:01.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So, we're back in session regarding item number three, Keith McLaughlin, 20 Kinderhook Drive, seeking a variance, requiring a...seeking a variance for an inground pool located five feet from the rear lot, requiring a 10-foot variance. Anybody have any comments on this one? Any concerns?
Um...
Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Levitt? Yes.
Okay. Yeah. I have a couple of questions because having done some projects myself on my properties, I know it's always talking about coverage of a lot. It always becomes an issue. And my impression of this lot is there's a very...it's...a lot of the property is covered with structure, and the garage is very much a two-story serious structure. It's not merely a small garage. And then there's another extension off of that. And it's already within nine feet, so it's, you know, out of code. On that side, there's very little space between this new garage or this existing garage structure. So, if you're...you're already cutting down to almost nothing on that, on the south side of the property, and then to go within five feet and then add a fence and green plant materials, to me, it just seems like they're pushing...the envelope is going to be pushed so far. It's not as if it's just one side of their property line that's being...is requesting a variance. And I did the calculations, and I don't understand why flipping that pool wouldn't work because you could still keep it within 15 feet of the north boundary based on the numbers that he has here of 23 by 6, 32 by 16. So, I'm just a little concerned about pushing it out to five feet. I think if you can bring it in to even a 10-foot distance on that rear line, it wouldn't make the adjoining properties feel as crowded. That's my concern.
Tony D. Any concerns?
Yep. Just based on what Diane said, have any of the neighbors expressed an encroachment issue?
You can give any comments from any of the neighbors or any...
I didn't hear any either. In visiting the property, you know, there's land to be had to make, you know, if you placed it in the middle of the yard, you wouldn't need any variances. But given the...given the situation and what he wants to achieve, I think I would be inclined to agree with and go along with the five-foot setback, and I'm okay with that at this point.
Okay. Larry? Any concerns?
Not right now.
Okay. Christine, can I have any concerns?
No. That neighborhood, you know, traditionally has been, you know, when it was first built, there were smaller houses, smaller structures, and as time has gone on, many people have added on to them and added things into the area, so I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Phyllis?
Um, yeah. I'm kind of happy that it's within the...it's kind of like behind the house, and it's...the yard is very well fenced. I don't know that it's had much of an impact on neighbors except for the noise, and wherever you put a pool, you're gonna have child noise. So, I'm okay with it.
You know, I noted that when I did the site visit that the house to the rear was quite some way set back from this property. So, from the side yard, or I'm sorry, from the rear yard setback, I don't know how much of an impact that would have on that neighbor, but anything else? Phyllis? Okay. And Tony S. Did you have any concerns? I think you're muted. Or you're not making any noise.
There we go. Okay. I just wanted to note that when I went out there, I did speak with the applicant, and I got a good look at the backyard from inside the house. And, you know, I looked at the existing fences and so on. I don't really have any problem with what he's looking for as he's laid it out there. He already did replace one fence, which I guess is the north side, which is the left side of the house as you look at from the street. So, he already replaced that with a six-foot fence. There's an existing six-foot fence on the rear line, and he's indicated that he's gonna replace that fence and also do some screening. And I don't remember anything in particular about the other side a lot, but I don't really have any concerns with what he's trying to do.
All right. Well, let me ask you this, Ms. Levitt. If...are there any conditions that could be offered that would help you or...
Well, I mean, I'm just...what are the stipulations? I don't know pool code. I mean, but don't you have to have a fence around a pool, correct?
Correct.
So, if this is at five feet from the property line, and they're gonna put the chain link on the property line, you know, obviously, is it essential that he have the screening? But where's the screening gonna go? Because, I mean, is the chain link gonna go right at the edge of the pool, or is it gonna go on the five feet out? And where is the green gonna go? That's all I'm...I'm just thinking, five feet is not a lot of space to put the edge of a pool in the ground pool, which is what I'm assuming it is, then an area to walk around the pool, and then a chain link fence and the greenery. I mean, it just seems like an unrealistic space.
Is that our concern, or is our concern only the variance?
Well, the variance, by bringing it in to only five feet from the property line, I think that it is going to become an imposition on the next property to the rear because it is so tight. And isn't part of why you have the variances?
If the fencing that's required around the pool goes around three sides and connects to the rear, that still satisfies the protection of the pool. I'm not well-versed on the pool restrictions, but I'm just looking at what we're here to determine.
Right.
And that's the fault of variance, whether that's reasonable or not.
Yeah. I just see that five feet as cramming the neighbors, but because you are throwing an awful lot into five feet, which is, I think, the reason that we have variances. Yeah, I just see that five feet as cramming the neighbors, but because, because you are throwing an awful lot into five feet, which is, I think, the reason that we have variances on property lines. But, you know, if no one's complaining, I guess, there's no reason for me to be protecting the neighbors.
Well, I don't know that, and this is a comment I'll probably make on many occasions, that neighbor or community opposition to an application really isn't one of our concerns. Our concerns are the impact on the environment and whether or not the benefit to the applicant outweighs any impact to the environment and the neighborhood. So, but simply whether the neighbors are all for it or all against it should not enter into our determinations. Solely whether the applicant, the benefit to the applicant outweighs any impact on the neighborhood or the community, I think is the, is the proper justification, the proper standard for evaluating it. And so I'm, the applicant has indicated he wants to put some greenery in between the six-foot fence and the pool, so I think we can make that as a condition because...
Oh, I thought it was a chain link. Am I wrong?
I don't think a chain link is required, is it? Just that has to be a six-foot fence, right?
No, it's not even six foot. But I thought he mentioned somewhere a chain link.
They, they are six-foot fences. The one, the new one that he put in is six feet and the existing one on the rear line, I believe, is six feet.
Actually, I thought it might be a little taller than that.
Are those the things that we should be talking about?
I'm just, because it's in the application, there is a mention of the fence and the, and actually even the plant materials that he's planting. So that's the only reason I brought it up.
Well, you're concerned about noise, is that, I mean, is that an encroachment that you're concerned about? I mean...
Yeah.
Okay. So if he were to plant some greenery, that, that might reduce the noise somewhat?
Right. But all I'm saying is realistically, how can you get the edge of a pool, the area around the pool, the fence and the greenery in five feet? That's my only concern. It's just not realistic. So if we can say, oh, inside the fence, once he gets the variance, where he puts it all, who cares? But I, I just don't think it's physically possible to do this, but that's why I would, you know, my suggestion was to move it in and make it a 10-foot, you know? But if something possibly he'll have to forego the greenery, I, I mean, I just don't know how you can physically do all of this in a five-foot space.
Okay. Did I get everybody's comments? Anybody I missed?
Paul?
Larry, did you have any comment now?
Yep. Well, I assume that the applicant has checked it out, that if, if he gets his variance, he'll be able to get a, he'll be able to meet all the requirements for putting the pool in.
Larry, is there some way that you can lower the volume on...
Is that better?
It's half better.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Okay. So what was your comment?
I assume that the applicant has checked out that if he gets approval from us, that he won't have any other issues in getting the pool approved. Because I know, I put a hot tub in and it was a whole big deal to get a permit just, just for that and it was in an enclosed area. But, so the applicant shouldn't, wouldn't have to go through this and then find out down the road that he can't do it.
The ZBA can grant the variance based on what the applicant has provided and the ZBA can mandate that the greenery be installed. The, I note that he's talked about a couple of specific types, like for example, it looks like a Leyland Cypress. Those are typically the pencil Cypress that you see, they're not very wide, so if he had a two-foot edge to his pool and two-foot of planting for the Cypress and then if he had the fence on the property line, I think he'd be able to do it. But the bottom line for this board is if he were unable to do it and planting the greenery is a condition of variance and he needs to come back for an amended variance and that's on the applicant. So since what's requested is five feet with planting, I think that that's what the board should be considering. And if it turns out that the applicant can't do that at the end of the day, for whatever reason, whether it's pool installation or something else, then we'll see him again.
Well, unless, I mean, if he needed six feet or seven feet, he wouldn't need to come back, right?
Right. That's what I want to know too. If he moves it in closer to the house because, not because of us, but because of his building permits, they require it when it comes time for that, he doesn't have to return to zoning, right?
Correct. It would only be if he wanted for some reason, if he was unable to plant the greenery or if he wanted for some reason to go closer than five feet, he would need to return. But if he's going further away, he would not be, he wouldn't need to come back. And the other thing to keep in mind is, one, the benefit that the applicant has stated that he wanted is to maximize the free backyard space that he has and that's why he's asked the board to push it back to the rear of the property. He wants to keep some space freer as non-pool area. And so I think if, in future, if we have, if the board has these concerns, it would be helpful to discuss them with the applicant while the public hearing is still open and it, you know, really flesh out why it can't be moved another two feet, three feet, five feet. And that way you'd have a complete record to do something different than what the applicant proposed. At this point, I think it would be a bit arbitrary to say, you know, eight feet is okay or 10 feet is okay when he's requesting five because we don't have anything in the record that would demonstrate that that gives him the benefit that he wants without a significant detriment to him on his pool, so. Chrissy, did you want to add anything? I see you.
Um, not really, no. I mean, I just, I know it'll, it'll, it'll adhere to building code, I just, I know that, so, if that makes anybody feel better.
Right. They, I mean, there would be no certificate granted for the pool in the absence of, you know, adhering to whatever the code is and whatever this board requires, so. And the building permit will have to show all the details, the distances and everything, so.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, then. Tony D., do you mind making a motion? Oh, well, how about this? I'll make these, I'll offer these findings. How about that? As to whether an undesirable change will produce in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby properties will be created by granting of the area variance. I don't, there doesn't seem to be any impact on the character of the neighborhood. The backyard is completely fenced in, the rear lot line, the neighboring property is a significant difference from, distance from that. And whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than an area variance, based upon the size of the pool and the lot line, lot size, it's, there's, any, almost any placement would require an area variance to achieve the applicant's desires. And whether it's substantial, mathematically it's substantial, but again, it's a, I think it's a substandard lot and I don't see that it has any physical impact on the, has any impact on the physical or the environment. And whether it was self-created, it certainly was self-created in the sense that he wants to put a pool in an area where he's going to need an area variance, but that's not a reason to deny the variance and I would offer those findings. And so, Tony D., if you don't mind making a motion? Out loud?
Yeah. Sorry, just was trying to unmute myself. Okay. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number, sorry, item number three. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair.
Do you want to offer some of the conditions that there'd be the landscaping consistent with the application?
I'm, I'm sorry, Paul.
You want to add as conditions landscaping consistent with the applicant's application?
Yeah. Okay. And adding the, I, I've got some background noise here, but...
Landscape, landscaping.
The landscaping as indicated in the application.
And I wonder if the board also wants to add a condition that the rear fence be maintained since that's the, you know, that's the property line that the pool is closest to.
That's fine with me.
So moved.
So maintaining the height, maintain both as the height and condition, right?
Yes.
Okay.
The height of the rear fence, landscaping as proposed by the applicant and the conditions as noted by the chair.
Very well. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any, any discussion on this? Anything anybody wants to add?
Let me just ask a question.
Go ahead.
Did, um, I, I missed this. Was, did he say that the rear fence was the, the neighbor's fence?
I think he wasn't, wasn't clear on who owned the rear fence.
Okay. Because he's going to have to provide his own barrier. I, I don't think, I don't think the building department will issue a permit with somebody else's barrier. It would have to be his own barrier, but, but that's just a thought of mine. So I, I think that he's going to have to build his own fence, but I don't know if that makes a difference.
Not, not to me.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes, I think, seven zero. Next, is there anybody here from 990 Dutchess Turnpike? All right. How about Mr. Mahoney? Are you here?
Yeah, so I'm still here.
Okay. Then we'll do number five.
Number five.
That's 38 Willowbrook Heights. Any discussion on this one? This is, he needs a variance of 14 feet 10 inches for the new building, which is too close to the lot line, side lot line. Any, any comments on this? First of all, Ms. Levitt.
Pardon?
Any, any comments on this one? Any concerns?
No.
Okay. Tony D.? Okay. All right.
No.
All right. Larry, do you have any concerns?
No.
Christine?
No concerns.
Phyllis?
I, no, I don't have any concerns.
And Tony S.?
No concerns.
Okay. Then I would offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will reduce in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. I, I note that this is on a half an acre. Most of the lots on, on that street are all substantial, substandard, sorry. This is in fact the only one that mean, or satisfies the front yard setback and so therefore I don't think that there's any detriment to the neighborhood in, or any of the properties. Whether it can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, other than cutting off part of the house, I think this is the only option available to the claim, to the applicant. And whether the, it's, the area variance is substantial, mathematically it is, but again, based upon the size of the lots, I don't think that it's, that it's substantial in that regard. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, I don't see any impact there. And whether it was self-created, it certainly, it certainly was, but that's again, not a reason to deny the variance and I would offer those findings. And Larry, do you mind making a, a motion?
Okay. Is that, is that number three, correct?
It's actually number, I have it as number four.
I believe it's five.
I'm on, sorry, five. I'm in five. All right. One second. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members and the comments made by the chairman.
All right. Any discussion on this? Is there a second?
There is.
Second.
Christine's, you seconded it? Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, then that motion...
Paul, it's hard to hear you. If you could speak into the mic, that would be great.
I'll try. I hear none opposed, so that passes seven zero. You got Christine as the second?
Yeah.
Okay. And is, is Hefler here or someone from the applicant? Okay. So...
Yes.
Next is number six, 53 South Jackson Drive. This is an application for a pool located in a front yard. So anybody have any concerns about this one?
No.
No.
No concerns.
Okay.
No, no concerns.
All right. Then I'll make, I'll offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will produce in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting of the variance. The pool is located behind an existing fence. Although this is prohibition of having a pool in the front yard, this is of course a corner lot and where the pool will be located would be, traditionally be considered a backyard, has no impact on the highway or visibility or any of those things and appears to fit in with the neighborhood, so I don't think there's any impact there. And whether the benefit can be sought by the applicant, benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance, this is the only way to do it as she has a corner lot and has, has two front yards. So this is her only means to achieve that. Whether it's, the area variance is substantial in the sense that you can't have a pool in the front yard, it's substantial, but in light of the fact that she has everything on her property is a front yard, I think that minimizes it. And whether it's self-created, it certainly is as the property has two front yards and she wants to put a pool in it, but that's not a reason to deny the application and so I would offer those findings. Christine, do you mind doing a motion?
Sure. Number six. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So move.
Is there a second? Tony?
Second.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on this one?
I just want a quick comment on this.
Go ahead.
I looked at this a couple of days ago. It looks like the, the chain link fence, which is in the back of the property, looked to me like it was about four feet.
I'm also being muted. I'm going to go sit in there. It's very...
So if so, I guess it would have, you'd have to have a higher fence on this, on the side near, near Wappingers Creek.
Okay. And that's, I think that's an issue for the building department, but...
Yeah, four feet is code, but yeah, it's the building department.
Okay. Let's just say it's a pool, that's all.
Okay. My comments about the fence, there's pre-existing, that vinyl fence that pre-exists there, I, I think shields any visual impact...
Right.
...that the pool might have or the people using the pool. Okay. Any other, any other comments or discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? All right, then that motion carries, seven zero. Is there someone here from 47 Kingwood Drive? All right, so it doesn't matter then, we'll do that one. 47 Kingwood Drive, that's item number seven. This is... This is a, an application to put a storage addition with a deck above an existing garage, above and attached to an existing garage located 12 feet from the side yard, requiring a variance of eight feet. Any comments on this one?
No comment.
No. No.
Okay. Then I'll offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. There was a previous variance granted for the addition. This is in line with that, doesn't encroach on the neighbor any further. And so there's no additional impact. And also, the topography of the area makes it such that I think that also minimizes any impact that this would have. Whether the benefit can be sought, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, again, due to the topography of the site and the layout of the property itself, there's, the only way to do this, again, is to get an area variance to fit it in with the property. And whether the area, requested area variance is substantial, mathematically it is, but it's no, it has no greater incursion into the side lot line than the existing structure. And there's, it doesn't have any physical or environmental impacts. And certainly, this is a self-created difficulty as he wants to build within the side lot line, but that's not a reason to deny the variance, and I would offer those findings. Any comments on that? Anything anyone wants to add? Phyllis, do you mind doing a motion?
Phyllis, you're on mute.
Sorry. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on this one? Okay, then, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion carries seven zero. And finally, 990 Duchess Turnpike. So, Chrissy, just so I'm clear, you have any problem with the variance as requested by the applicant with the understanding that she may not need all of it?
Correct.
Okay. Then this is an application to, for a deck where it's to be located 13 feet 8 inches from the side property line, requiring a side variance of 6 feet 4 inches. Anybody have any concerns about this one?
None.
No concerns.
No.
Okay. So, it appears that, well, let me, let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. As it turns out, the proposed deck is two feet wider than the existing, whatever that porch is that's there now. There's a driveway in between where the deck will end and the neighbor's property. So it doesn't seem to be any way that's going to alter the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the, or any detriment to the neighborhood. Whether it can be achieved by some method feasible other than an area variance, this is the only way to do it based upon how close the property is to the, within the side lot, side lot line. And whether it's substantial, mathematically it is, but physically impact, it doesn't have that much of an impact. It's only two feet more than the existing structure that's there. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions, I don't see that it would have any physical or environmental impact. And it is self-created in the sense that they want to build something within the side lot line, but that's not a reason to deny it. And I would offer those findings. And I would make this motion. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based upon the review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings of the chair. And I would just make a condition that that porch has to be removed. Any, any comments or any, any comments on that? Is there a second?
I can.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Then all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Okay, then that passes seven zero. Without any other business, there's no other business to attend to, then I would, I would move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Then I'll see you all next month.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night.
I'm sorry? I think Tony D.